May Brother Don Townend, would you lead us in prayer and then I'll lead us in the Plague of Allegiance?
Our Heavenly Father, Lord, we're so thankful for this day that you've made for us. We pray, Lord, that you would be with each and every representative here of the different organizations. I pray, Lord, that you would bless them for their care and for Dade County and love of Dade County. And we pray for each commissioner that's making decisions. Pray that you would be with them as they consider the business of this county. And be with all those this month who have lost loved ones. We've had several in our community, Lord, and we just pray for them, that you comfort them. We pray that you'd be with our chairman Ted Rumley and his family and those and his extended family that are sick with COVID. And pray that you'd watch over and protect them. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Place the flag, please.
Salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Don.
This is regularly scheduled meeting of the Dade County Board of Commissioners, which takes place at the same time on the first Thursday of every month. Proper notice to this of this meeting was given to the legal organ of Dade County. Been posted in the hallway of the administrative building. At this time, I will call the roll and have it recorded by the clerk, Mr. Lowry. Mr. Hartline?
Present.
Ms. Bradford?
Here.
And vice chair is here and our Ted Rumley is absent tonight with COVID. So we have a quorum there before we have a legal meeting. I need to find out where I'm at now. You OK, Lamar?
Something's happened. Let me go step in just a minute outside.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lowry had some episode, just felt he needed to leave.
Mr. Chairman, we still have a legal quorum.
We do.
You want to proceed temporarily.
We still have three here, so we'll go ahead with the business at hand unless something happens that we need to, we need to look forward a little closer. And for some reason, ah, what I'm looking for. All righty. Now, we will have our district commissioners, no, excuse me, citizens' participation, number two on our agenda for the meeting. Do you have anyone who wants to come up and talk to us? Give you a few minutes if you do. We moved it to the forefront of our several months ago, so. No one? Then we will continue on with our district commissioner reports and we'll wait and see about Mr. Lowry. Philip?
As far as the force complex, they've just been doing regular maintenance, getting a worker on the park. They have moved all of our conditioner into a Conex box. We've got to get it in and out of the dry. They've started working on cleaning up behind their shop so we can add on to the building to put our equipment inside. On electrical inspections for last year.
Can you sit your microphone in place?
Let me move it. All right, for our electrical inspections of last year, on new construction, permanent power, we had 132. New construction, temporary power, we had 70. Mobile homes, we done 37. Alterations, 54. Campers, 21. And then garages, sheds, barns, et cetera, just 26. And we had one cell phone tower and a billboard. So for a total of 342 electrical inspections for last year. That's all I have. Ms. Bradford?
I just have that we're still working on some computer updates and we're also moving forward with some maintenance of construction and working on making the transfer station much better. That's all I have.
Yeah, all right, thank you. Again, I'll not try to talk for Ted. Ted's been out over a week now with COVID and we've all been through Christmas and New Year's, we've gone through the same things with that being busy. So there, it's usually a latter month. I will say this on behalf of our county, we did have a joint meeting the other night here in this room with the city of Trenton concerning two items that have been on the front burner, back burner, however you want to look at it, for Dade County. And one of them is the elections office, which is right behind that wall here. We've been talking for quite a while about building a building, getting them out of here for several reasons. They've got to have more room is one. Secondly, anytime you have an election and you are an elected person, whether it's across the hall at the tax commissioner's office or either one of us in here, Ted, we are elected and especially if we're, whether or not we're on that ballot, and somebody come in and just simply say, well, how do you feel like it's going? You're within 150 feet of a polling place and if you answer that, it's really, and it's been that way for the longest time. So that's another reason they should not be in the same building with other elected people. So we did have that meeting and what came out of that meeting was the city of Trenton owns two lots by the old depot, train depot. The county owns the depot and the quarter of acre that it sits on. And so rather than to buy land, which we were looking at buying, the city has agreed to deed that property and Mayor's back in, he can chime in if he has any reason to, to deed that property to Dade County government to build the building there. So it will be building owned by the county. It'll be, the property will be owned by the county. And then the fate of the old, it was mentioned earlier with the public defender's office. As far as the old depot, that's an ongoing process of what we're going to do with it. Also, out of that same meeting came the, we talked about the animal shelter, which has been on a lot of burners for several years and about, what, three, three splash now or so it's been on them. And we're closer, I guess, than we've ever been, but we're not there yet. But we did, the county is going to give property at the backside of the transfer station, what, not taking up what was our burn pit, but right back on there. That's where the animal shelter when built would be located. So it would not be through a gate anymore where you've got to go around by the sewer and all that stuff. And so that's what we're working on and that was a very productive meeting and I appreciate Alex and all the commissioners from the city showing up and also his clerk and our clerk. It was a very productive meeting. So we're working on some things and hopefully in the next couple of years' time, you'll see those things, but it is an ongoing process. The one down here is more just us, the other is a joint venture of the building between the county and the city. And so we're still looking at, as some people brought up, the laws, the, you know, the different things. It's not so simple, you just pick up an animal and take it and put it somewhere. There's a lot more involved than that. So we will, we're still working on it and we will be until we begin to see some ground being broke, if that's the right word to say. I usually, because I'm using Ted's book and not my computer, I usually talk about the splashed and incoming money that we seem to spend a lot of here tonight, which is what it's there for and that's what we do with it. But I'm not looking at, I think it was our best December, it was down from last month, but it was our best December, I think, in a few years. So goes in cycles. The, what we're seeing now is October money that hit anyway, not December money. December money will hit about February, so we'll see how the, actually the month of December went. Mr. Lowry, do you feel like sharing anything or just, we've given our reports, if you feel like it, it's entirely up to you.
I'm going, I'm going to get Alex to read that for me rather.
For the month of December, we, well, this is the year end date for what we've done all year for Dade County. It's been a really busy year and we pushed 35,910 calls that transpired out of the 911 center. That's right at 9,800 calls a, 98 calls a day. And the December numbers, as we went through with a busy holiday, me and Lamar were talking about that in the other, we had a lot of call volume that went up in which it's always a time that the sheriff's office and the police department are really actively busy out patrolling and doing business checks. But the EMS answered 608 calls. Fire departments, through our volunteer fire departments, answered 796 calls. And our law enforcement was about 8,210 calls. For the total calls for the month of December was 9,614. We had six more addresses come through to us for the month of December, for the total of 119 new addresses established in Dade County. And we had some other conversation this week with, that's getting more and more. Stacy's going to attest to that here and he can see that we're, one of these comes with several building inspections and power inspections. So that's what we've done here in 911.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, Mr. Lowry, for getting that together. All right, under appearances, we have tonight with us, as always, Ms. Mindy Hallworth from the Dade County Library, a busy and happening place.
Thank you so much, commissioners, for having me. I've compiled some statistics for our end of the year as well. Basically, this marks my one year. I've been here since January of last year, or December of last year, but these stats are basically from January of 2022 through the end of December. And just want some of y'all to look at these numbers. They're pretty impressive and I'm pretty excited about how much activity we have going on in the library. 42,889 circulations. That's books coming in and out, people checking out books in the library. I know we'd asked about the Libby circulations. We were able to find that. 13,488 are downloadable. That's our Libby ebooks, audiobooks, magazines and our e-read kits. 26,950 was our door count for the year. 3,200 computer logins. Printer use, 6,568 pages. Faxes, we got a new fax machine that we're playing with since July. We've sent 96, we've received, no, we've sent 96 faxes since July. Look at the internet and wireless usage. Those are folks that maybe don't have access to internet at their house. They come and use the library's internet. So that's 8,225 internet usages throughout the year. Our study rooms, we've got two different study rooms. They were used 167 times with 333 people total in those rooms. Our large meeting room used 35 times with a total of 282 people. We added over 1,000 new titles to our library this year. That's also something that I'm very excited and proud about. I love, I love when new books come. We had, we had an order come in today, so I'm very excited about that. And we registered 417 new patrons. That does not include the playcard students that we have, all the Dade County students. I looked at those circulations and I wasn't able to get them pulled up on time for here, but I did look them up. 477 circulations just on the playcards since we initiated those at the end of May, beginning of June. So that's how many kids are using those playcards to checkbooks in, or checkbooks out. So those are, oh, OK, we're moving on to our book bundles. Oh, no, that's OK. No, go ahead. We started something new. It's basically a grab and go for parents who might be on the go and they don't have time to come look at, look and select some books for kids their age. We've started a trial run. They're called book bundles. You can come in, they're ready to go, first come, first served. You just grab the books. We've got them basically bundled by age range or eating, eating, reading range, kindergarten, third grade and fifth grade. I know that two of those book bundles have already moved out. So we've got one left. We're going to see how those go and we will implement more of those and have more age ranges for those if anybody wants to come in and check those out. We've also started a new teen space hours where we do have a dedicated young adult section and a teen space in the library. And based on our teen advisory board and some of our teens that participate in the library, we're designating some time, three times a week, Tuesdays, Wednesdays and Thursdays, just for teens to be in there. We've got refreshments and snacks and a little Keurig setup for them where maybe the littles can't come in and maybe the grownups can't come in. So it's just for teens to be able to. They can hook up to the switch, they can play music quietly. It's just a space for them. And we also have a winter reading challenge, very similar to our summer reading challenge, but on a slightly smaller scale. If you would like to track your reading for the month of July, please sign up through Beanstack, log in your minutes reading and you can enter to win some cool prizes that we've got that we'll draw for at the end. We had a really great collaboration today for our kids' club. The naturalists from Cloudling Canyon State Park came and joined us and did a presentation on bats, basically taking away that scary notion of bats. They presented a whole hour on everything baddie. They're going to come back and do a homeschool session for us at the end of January on the 25th at 1:00 PM. So if you missed our 4:00 PM showing tonight, you can come back on the 25th. We also have a really cool Young Creatives this month. Young Creatives is our teen program. It's just for teens. Once a month, we invite an artist to come in and give a little spiel on what they do and sometimes we have a collaborative project. And Claire of a Sort came a couple of years ago before I was at the library. And if you come into the library, you've seen all of the silk hangings that we have throughout the library. Well, she's coming back and she's working on a teen project just with our Young Creatives and they are going to do a collaborative silk painting that we will display in the library as well. So we're excited to welcome her back. Here's some of our new titles that I'm so excited about. These are some of our new juvenile titles that we have on display in the library and on a special bookcase. And I'm excited to announce also, you can see it on our Facebook page, one of our young patrons wrote a review. We've been asking some of our patrons to write reviews of any of the new books that they read. And our first young review will be up on the Facebook page and you can also, when you come into the library, you can see her review on that book. So if it's something that interests you, you can take that book home. We're also inviting patrons as well as staff members to write reviews of some of our new titles. I've written one this, well, we've got one on Mad Honey that one of our patrons wrote. The book that I wrote is not up there. I wrote one on a historical fiction book called The Nightship. So if you're interested to see what any of the staff members or some of our patrons have to say about some of our new titles, stop in, have a look and maybe you can be interested in one of those titles as well. Last but not least, if you go to chrl.org, you can find our programming calendar, facebook.com Dade County Library or instagram.com Dade County Library. We are posting our monthly calendar on there. You will see updates on our programming, any special closures, like when we had to close for the weather. All will be updated on Facebook as well as some of those reviews. You can see some of those online as well. So please look us up, ask us any questions on there or like us. Thank you. Thanks again. Any questions for me?
No, thank you. You're a busy place.
We're a busy place. We're the hub of Trenton, I feel like. Well, thank y'all so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you for everything. All right, we have now Ms. Sarah Dyer and tag team with Laura Beth Cunningham. There with the extension service.
So we stayed pretty busy in the month of December as well. We did participate in the Christmas parade, which we hadn't done in many years. I feel like we were maybe kind of the comedic relief by this theme that we came up jointly with the Optimus Club. I guess I wasn't like thinking super clearly. I was just looking for a good little, something funny and we could play some cool music with it. But I did dress up 4Hers as prisoners. I did do that, but they all had a blast and I think we had a lot of fun with it and I really hope that we can do another one next year. Our middle school, I'm really trying to teach the middle school age kids on how to give back. They are in that age group where they don't always understand that. So we coordinated with Ms. Anne Brown, who is a volunteer for the Tri-State Humane Society, and we used old T-shirts and we made a bunch of dog toys for her to bring back to the Humane Society. And she had just gotten in a bunch of puppies that day, so she was really excited to bring all the puppies, all these new toys. Our homeschooler meeting this last month, we talked about where our Christmas trees come from and how important they are in agriculture and how important they are just to humans in general because our trees obviously supply us with oxygen. And then we made a little Christmas tree craft and they seemed to really enjoy this one more than the other ones. Our next meeting is going to be this next week on the 11th and we are going to talk about apples. And we do all these little virtual tours every lesson that we do. So we did a virtual tour of a Christmas tree farm and we're going to do a virtual tour of an apple orchard. And then I'm going to let them taste apples and then we'll make another craft because I like crafts. Our homeschoolers community club, they also came back a couple of days later after this meeting and we decorated a bunch of Christmas cards and colored them. And then we took them down to the senior center right after that. And then the seniors were really wanting us to sing Christmas carols, which we were not prepared for. And a lot of these kids do not know Christmas carols. So us, myself and the parents were like really belting out those Christmas carols for the senior center. So that was a lot of fun as well. And this is us giving them the cards. We had enough cards because they spent about two hours coloring Christmas cards, so we had enough Christmas cards to give each senior like two or three. So it was, it was a lot of fun. And then we did have our monthly craft night, again with the Christmas theme. We had these giant pine cones and we made Christmas trees with those. And then my husband was trying to help with the poinsettia cells and he's in that picture holding a poinsettia. Our next craft night is also going to be next week on Friday and we are going to make little owls out of paper plates.
Our livestock judging team for 4H will kick off on Tuesday. So this is a little bit different from livestock showing. You do not have to own any livestock to be on the team and they get the chance to be the judge. So they are learning about the value differences in livestock, why certain cattle might be better than others, really what the industry is looking for when those animals go through the production chain and into the food chain and how those are evaluated at livestock shows. So it's a very valuable program for them. They also learn how to orally defend their decision-making and their reasons per se for why they placed the class the way they did. So this team, we haven't had one in many years and it's coming up. So January 10th at 3:30 at the Ag Center for any youth ages fourth through 12th grade can come out for that program. In December, there was a Calhoun livestock show that was all species. So there was a cattle show, a hog show and a goat show for the first time again in many years. We had exhibitors representing Dade County 4H and all of those species. So Gracie Hunter showed her heifer for the first time this season. Robert McCag Jr., let me clarify, someone asked me the other day, I don't think that's Robert McCag in that picture. No, it is his grandson showing pigs this year. And then the Hughes girls showing their goats. And they all had a great run down in Calhoun. We are hosting a livestock show coming up. If you remember, we host two a year. These are multi-statewide events that we host, so we will have exhibitors from all across the southeast come to this event. Mark your calendars for January 21st if you want to come check that out and see what it's all about. It might be a little smelly in the Ag Center, that's what it's for, but we will have lambs and goats showing in there all day long on that Saturday. Then the next Saturday, we want to draw everyone's attention to this because this is a fundraiser open to the public. There are some rules and regulations, though. So this is our bullseye challenge. Those of you might remember that we wanted to launch this in March of 2020. We all know that COVID hit. So COVID hit the week that we had this planned and we kept postponing it and then we had to cancel it. But it's a fundraiser where our safe shooting sports team, our shotgun team collaborates with local law enforcement. So we are working on reaching out to them and making sure that we can have local law enforcement officers as well as game wardens there on that day. So 4Hers that are safe shooting sports team members, the certified coaches, certified law enforcement officers and certified game wardens are the only ones eligible to pick up a BB gun. But the public can come and say, I want this 4Hr to challenge this coach or this officer to challenge this officer for $5. So you come, put your money down to sponsor a challenge or a round of a BB shootout. So it's them shooting at targets, not at each other. It's just like the BB match would be at a 4H state event. So it's going to be a big time. We're really excited to bring it back. Again, we've never hosted it because it got canceled, but we hope that you will come support that program. Our Day Greater Gardener Series will meet on the 24th at 6:00. Our Tri-State Beekeepers will meet on the 16th at 7:00. And Cattlemen's will be over in Walker County. So please note the attention to Walker County for this month. Any questions?
What is the youngest the child can get involved with the 4H as far as the animals, you know, being around the animals and that kind of thing?
So our Chick to Chicken project begins in first grade. That is the youngest that the opportunity is available to youth exhibitors for livestock. And then the statewide, state sets the rules for the age limits for the rest of the species. So hogs begins in third grade, most other species begin in fourth grade.
I know somebody interested in it, it happens to be a first grader, I think, and that's he loves, he loves animals, doesn't matter what they are.
Great. Well, our chicken project.
I see him involved in it.
Yes, our registration for that will be coming up probably at the next meeting. We'll talk about it, so we will bring that.
We'll probably pick our next chicken breed in March. So if you may have any suggestions?
Yeah, I'm open to listening.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
And finally, we have Ms. Sandy White with the Alliance for Dade, your Chamber of Commerce.
Thank y'all. Hope y'all had a happy new year. Just a few updates. What I'm trying to do now is with the updates I give and newsletters, to find any information that I can for businesses that might be helpful. The sessions with the Small Business Development Center, I've met with that, our regional representative, and these are online sessions that are available all through the year. And so I will update these as they come. But any information on those, you can contact our office at the chamber and I'll give you further information. Also too, anybody who is, who receives our newsletter, this information is in it as well. So we also, in the upcoming newsletter, there'll be information about some USDA funding for agricultural producers as well as rural small businesses. So trying to really focus on that and focus on what small business in the community might Also coming up, some of the events, getting, starting off with the year, I hope some of you participated with the hike at Cloudling Canyon. But if not, there are several things going on. They, they publish a calendar of half the, half the month until the 15th and then they publish another calendar for the rest of the month. You can find that on their Facebook page and we try to publish it on our Facebook page as well. But there are a lot of wonderful activities going on at Cloudling Canyon and it's a great asset for the community. Also, one of our other assets, the Lookout Mountain Flight Park is getting a rare honor. There is a documentary that is, has been produced and will be showing its world premiere on the 15th at Walker Theater in Chattanooga. So I invite you all to come out. I'm definitely going to make that trip and you can get tickets at lookoutfilmfestival.org. But it tells the story of, of that park and we are very privileged to have that park in our county. So then for the Welcome Center visitors for this, for December, we had 10 Dade residents, 21 visitors and 21 phone calls. So we are working on several things. So we are working on several things that we'll be talking more about coming up, but you'll see a lot more publicity on the county as well as some collateral pieces so that we can get the word out about how wonderful the county is. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All righty, that concludes our appearances. We go to fiscal, fiscal matters and I will now ask Don Townsend, our clerk CFO, to please give us the financial statement.
All right, as of December 31st, 2022, the general fund had a balance of $2,697,437. We still have on hand 1.3 million in certificate of deposits, which are investments. For a total of $3,997,437. Federal Asset Fund, U.S. Treasury, a balance of zero. Sheriff's Special Fund, a balance of $8,938. Drug Abuse Education Fund, $6,870. Supplemental Juvenile Services Fund, $28,345. Victim Assistance Fund, $1,376. Jail Fund, $6,595. Federal Asset Fund, Department of Justice, zero. American Rescue Plan, $1,934,709. Accommodations, excise tax, $265,666. Let's see, Employee Flexible Spending Account, $30,648. Payroll Account, $105,379. The old SPOLOST, 2015 SPOLOST, $124,023. And the new SPOLOST, 2021 SPOLOST. Projects Account has a balance of $403,594. And the SPOLOST Proceeds Account has a balance of $180,335. Looking at the next page, under, as of November 30th, 2022, under revenues, we've collected for the month of November, $3,087,565. We had budgeted $2,987,665, so we were in excess of funds of $99,899. For the year-to-date, we've collected $7,835,464. And we had budgeted $7,547,567. So again, in excess of $287,896. And then under expenses, we, for the month of November, we expensed $1,055,408. We budgeted $1,290,385. We were under budget $234,976. For the year-to-date, we've spent $5,812,756. Budgeted $5,898,784. So again, we were under budget $86,027. Budget attained year-to-date should be right at 41.67%. Revenues attained were at 59.52 and expenses were at 43.33. Under local option sales tax, let's see, we collected for the month of December 2022, deposited $219,799.16. And in the special purpose local option sales tax account, again, that was $274,748.2. Under the, you see the next report for the 2021 project worksheet. I usually print all these out, so I'm trying to focus here. We're doing well there. I mean, we just reported those balances just a little while ago. And you see the 2015, the only thing left in the 2015 SPOLOST again is the fire departments and they have been diligently trying to expense those final funds so we can close the account out and make our auditors very happy. And then the year-to-date tax collection from Tax Commissioner Angie Galloway, I always want to call her Marlon, is balanced, a budget was $5,495,500. So far, she has collected $3,984,929. And that's 72.51% of that budget. Just to bring you up to date on the audit, we sometimes have had auditor, our CPA, I should say, here from Henderson, Hutcherson, McCullough, they did complete the audit. They, they're putting the final touches on it and making, you know, making sure things tied down. But it's underway, it's looking good. We expect to, I expect her to be here at February's meeting. I think that'll be February 2nd, if I think that's correct. And so, you know, she'll be making her executive report to the board and then we will acknowledge the approval or approve the audit as is. And then we'll also be submitting that to the state of Georgia's Department of Audits and Accounts any day. Thank you.
All right, he's finished the financial report. Are there any questions for our chief financial officer? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve as ready.
And second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion in the second. Give a roll call. Mr. Lowery's out, Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Vice Chair votes yes and we have absentee of the chairman as well as this time of Mr. Lowery. All right, now the, go to our unfinished business. I don't know if any, if anybody, all right, legal matters, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. I skipped over you there. I figured you didn't have any. All right. All right, under new business, then we will have consideration of all items on the workshop agenda. And I'll ask.
I just figured out why I couldn't see. I had to run glasses on, so that makes all the difference in the world.
I'll ask the clerk to please read the consent agenda.
Well, you know, one of these, anyway. All right, approval of, let's see, yeah, we have the approval of the agenda as presented tonight, the approval of the previous meeting minutes, review of personnel status report, resolution R-10-23 is the appointment of a member to the Water and Sewer Authority, District Two, Mr. Tim Fowler, for a term commencing today, January 5th, 2023 through December 31st, 2026. Approval of SPOLOST items, we have a John Deere Terrain Cut 9009A rotary mower with canopy, and that's a 55 horsepower diesel engine, recommended by Parks Director Stacy Stevens from Greenville Turf and Tractor for $48,000. We have stainless steel salt spreaders, four of those. And those are for truck number 176 and 42 and 2017, 350 and a snowplow. Those all, and tandem axle salt truck and sand spreader. And all of those things come from a recommendation of buyer's snow dog for $65,818.13. Let's see, we have a uninterruptible power supply, UPS for three phase and administrative building for emergency services. That totals $74,691.66 plus cost of contract services. I don't have it pulled up, is it Lee's something?
Leebert.
Leebert.
It's the machine.
What is it?
Tim V E R T I V is the company?
Say that again.
Bert V E R T I V.
Lee's Bert?
It's Leebert.
Lobert?
Lee, Lobert.
Anyway, that's the company. Sheriff's Office has requested for a training simulator side improvement and that is to be determined if it's going to be a stick frame or metal frame building, but anyway, we approved, pre-approved a $100,000 estimated cost for that project under ARPA. And then Historic Preservation Courthouse Project Report is recommended by Mr. Jamie Blevins. Resolution R-5-23, 2003 agreement with the Public Defender's Office to run from now until December 31st, 2023. Resolution R-01-23, which is financial authorizations on bank accounts. Resolution R-02-23, tax anticipation note line of credit authorization. Resolution R-03-23, Association of County Commissioners of Georgia, appointing Robert Goff, Commissioner of Dade County, as our county legislative coordinator for the year 2023. Resolution R-04-23, memorandum of understanding with the Family Crisis Center. Resolution R-06-23, a grant application for, to the Georgia Department of Transportation for a local maintenance and improvement grant for FY 2023. And that is, so you know, for $357,240.40. Resolution R-07-23, that's amendment number one to the fiscal year 2023 budget and that is for $150,000 to various departments. Resolution R-08-23, disposal surplus county property on gov deals, which were five Hummers, one for parts only. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Well, I'm going to have to be a little retrody so I get all the stuff in before I call for a, a motion. The reading of the minutes of the last month's regular meeting and any special call meetings will not be required. Since all commissioners have been furnished copies in advance, the minutes are public record available for reviewing the county commission office. The minutes are included in the consent agenda and that's the reason I'm reading this even though late and will be considered for approval under new business. I will then ask you to do it and our clerk has read it. I will now ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, I will ask Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
And Vice Chair votes yes. And that will conclude it, I think. All right, we have no need for an executive session. Any questions from either of you commissioners table? If none, I will consider a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
I'll second that.
All right, I call a roll. Mr. Hartline?
Yes.
Ms. Bradford?
Yes.
Vice Chair votes yes. This being adjourned. Thank you for being here and happy new year. And hope that Ted gets back next week.